Planning Board Meeting to Order. Please call a roll.
Ron Lahoullier.
Here.
Paul Rabides. Jason Berry.
Here.
Jeremy Rhodes.
Here.
Chris Horton.
Here.
Paul Goodwin. Doug Haberman.
Here.
David Witham.
Here.
Robert Bellmore.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to appoint Mr. Goodwin and Mr. Haberman as full voting members this evening. First item is approval of the minutes of July 19, 2023. Does anybody have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Berry. Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion? Folks in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes.
Stand.
Chair, I'd like to abstain as well.
Mr. Rabides and Mr. Bellmore abstain? Committee reports. You have a summary of the Land Use Boards. Does anybody have any comment? Seeing none, move along to City Council Report. Mr. Witham.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Next is Strasburg Regional Planning Committee update. Mr. Horton, do you have anything for us this evening?
The committee is not met this past July. Next meeting is this Friday, August 18th.
Right, thank you. And 2030 Committee. Mr. Berry, do you have anything up to date?
Our next meeting is in September, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next item is old business. Any old business that may come before the Board? Director Mears?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item 4A under new business, River Valley Development Corporation is seeking various amendments to an approved site plan on property located at 206 Green Street in residential single-family R1 District. Assesses map 8 lot 78, site number 01, 2018, and sub number 04, 2018. Director Mears, anything to add?
Yes, so this is an application. This is a townhomes at Green Ridge, which was approved by the Planning Board back in 2018 for 28 townhouse site plan and condo subdivision, along with associated site improvements. The applicant revised the plan in 2019 for curbing plantings within the rain gardens and trail to Turgeon's Lane. The applicant is seeking several waivers, which include bike rack, Cape Cod berm, the installation of a 5 by 50 pavement from Turgeon Lane, a request to have two no parking signs removed, and a request that language be changed on one of the signs to authorized vehicles only. This is ready for the Board to take action on tonight.
Right, thank you. Is the application ready for acceptance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Entertained a motion for application acceptance? Motion made by Mr. Rabides. Seconded by Mr. Horton. Discussion? Folks in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Just to make a note, Mr. Berry has recused himself of this item. This time, I'd like to invite River Valley Development to make their presentation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Patnott. I'm president of River Valley Development, the developer for the townhomes at Green Ridge. We're in front of you tonight. We're 99% done over there now, and on behalf of myself and the Board of Directors, we have two of them right here that currently live there. The condominiums are 100% occupied by individual homeowners. So these waivers are not just coming from myself. This is coming from the people that are going to live here. So would you like me to go through one by one here? I would like to just remind the Board.
Right, please do.
Yeah, okay. So this is a private property site plan in front of you right now. The residents own it 100%. It is private, not public. The city has no they don't have any maintenance or anything involved with this property. So the first waivers we're looking for is a waiver from a requirement of installing bike racks. There are three of them on site right now. These units are oversized units. They have one garage door, however, they can accommodate two cars if they're small. Most people, if they have bicycles, will be in their garages. They don't see a need for them. What they see is probably a problem with snow removal and whatnot. Just another thing to get broken. That's item number one. Item number two is waiver requiring this Cape Cod berm. Now, the Cape Cod berm originally was proposed back in 2019 in lieu of the granite, because what was on the site plan is actually not really what's there. What's there today are custom fieldstone walls with granite steps going up to. In front of that, it comes off and it divides off to one building into another building. They service two buildings. That creates very small islands around plantings, some electric, and some shut offs that are ground level. Originally in 2019, it was determined that something should be there for safety for vehicles if a vehicle ever went up over to protect transformers and stuff like that. We since had put some decorative boulders in that do a lot better job in the restraint of a car. Versus Cape Cod berm, which is only four inches big in the back, flush in the front, it's really kind of comfortable to drive up. This does not serve any purpose for drainage. We have a letter from Barry Surveying, the designer for this property. And the association is quite frankly, they don't want it in their driveways just because it's another maintenance issue. These islands are so tight that they would have to be done either by hand or in a big storm, it would be done with a heavy piece of equipment. Cape Cod berm does not stand up to this heavy machinery, or even a plow for that matter. So we're asking for a waiver on that. Number three, waiver from requiring a 5 by 50, it's actually 5 by 40, but 5 by 50 pavement from Turgeon Lane. Now, this is all prepped. This is ready go for hot top. The residents had just expressed their concern on attracting people into their property rather than, you know, it's private. So originally, what this was way back in 2018, this was approved on the condition that this would be put in because there was a proposal for a sidewalk out on Green Street that was not feasible with wetlands. It's a state road, blah, blah, blah. And they want a connectivity for the residents that are going to live in these townhomes to the downtown area, down through Turgeon, up Main Street, and so forth. So it's the actual residents that are speaking on behalf of this small piece of sidewalk that comes off a Turgeon, just goes to the top of the hill and just stops. The rest is dirt after that. And it goes to the loop road that's for authorized vehicles only. Item number four, request to have two no parking signs installed. So currently, there are seven no parking signs. It's kind of much for the situation. So we went to SRTC and life safety did not have a problem with having the two where we proposed to put them would be as you're coming up Meadow Way, you have the flag in front of you and to the right of that flag and to the left would be two no parking signs that would accommodate everything up to where there is currently guest parking, what I call guest parking, overflow parking. That would suffice, and the fire department or police department did not have an issue with that. Requesting language on the two signs at a gravel drive around the pond to say authorized vehicles only. Believe currently, it's kind of lengthy and it would require a much larger sign than what would require on this. Walking trails only, emergency access permitted, and sidewalk connected to Turgeon Lane to Main Street. So those are the waivers that are in front of you now, and if there are any questions, I'd love to answer them.
All right, thank you. We're going to open a public hearing soon. In the meantime, you may have a seat, and then we'll have questions for you. Before I open a public hearing, I'd like to ask anybody who's speaking this evening to state your name and your address or your affiliation. Speak into the microphone. Do not address people in the audience. If you need to stray from the microphone, please use the portable mic if you have to do a presentation on the easel. And with that, open the public hearing. Ask if there are any comments from the public.
Good evening, all. My name is Bill Freddo, F-R-E-D-D-O. I'm a resident in the townhomes of Green Ridge for a little over two years. I'm on the Board. One of three members on the Board. John Ross Kelly, who is president of the Board, is with me. We are fully supportive of these changes. In particular, the Cape Cod berm, having observed the circular plowing that's taken place over the last three or three and a half years, we just think it would be a maintenance nightmare. And we don't need it for drainage, and it's just something that'll have to be fixed every year because this is New Hampshire. It does snow. And, you know, we've had some pretty good storms over the last two or three years, and, you know, moving snow around a circular driveway is a real challenge. We've had some good people doing it, but we just view the Cape Cod berm as kind of just an ongoing maintenance nightmare for us that provides no real value. Other than that, we're fully supportive of the other changes that were our adjustments to the site plan that were discussed by Mr. Patnott, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment on this application? Director Mears, is there any correspondence regarding this application?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We'll turn to questions from the Board. Mr. Witham.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just start by saying I'm in support of all of these waivers. I took the time to drive up there today, drove around, went on the gravel road, even though maybe I'm not supposed to, but I don't think the sign's up yet, so I think I'm good. You know, the Cape Cod berm, which has been mentioned, these little islands, there are some utilities there. They have put boulders in most all of them. They are very tiny. I don't think the Cape Cod berm does anything for vehicle safety. It doesn't do anything for drainage. I do believe it would be a maintenance problem, so I have no issue with that waiver request. These are well-maintained landscaped areas. Again, they've put some decorative boulders. Seems to work. The other is the sidewalk. I remember the conversation back when this project first got its site plan approval. I think the sidewalk to Turgeon Lane was, I'll use the term a Hail Mary at the last hour because we were struggling with the idea of the sidewalk on Green Street, and we wanted to have some connectivity. But I guess, at least from my perspective, never really thought much of the fact that this is going to be a privately owned area. This isn't going to be a city street, so I think what's currently there, just that gravel access if a resident wanted to take a walk, not just in their development, they want to go out on Green Street, which is pretty tight, that might provide them with some access. They have put up a sign saying private property at the entrance from Turgeon Lane. Seems to work for me. No parking signs. Doesn't matter to me if the public safety folks are fine with it. And I think the point is well made. I mean, bike racks are required when we have site plan approvals, but these are privately owned units. They're like single-family homes in many ways. People are going to keep their bikes in their garage, so I think it's a reasonable request at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Witham. Other questions from the Board? Mr. Goodwin?
Having not been here when the original site plan came through, the connection to Turgeon, does anyone know whether or not that actually connects or to just stop at the property line? So it's paved to the property line, and then it's gravel, and then Turgeon, they call the second yeah, Turgeon's Lane, right? That's the connecting street?
Observation today, it's a gravel walkway from Turgeon Lane to the gravel loop road. That's for access-only maintenance. If you were to pave that sidewalk, it would go from Turgeon Lane to a gravel road. So it seemed to make much sense to even pave it, quite frankly, but observation.
That pavement also, so from Turgeon Lane to the actual property line is approximately 11 feet. The rest of it would be on the private property. So after you come off of Turgeon, off of the city right of way, onto this property here, you're back on gravel, the whole connector road that you see going around on your plan there, which is.
Do you want to use the portable mic, please?
I'm seeing the dark sidewalk here, right? That's paved, right?
So you're looking at the original site plan that shows.
This is not an as-built. This is not what's up there.
That is not the as-built. That is showing what was proposed way back. It did not make sense at the time to have a asphalt walkway crossing a gravel road that they have to plow. So that was deleted off of the original site plan. So in lieu of that, we had a gravel road proposed. And we also donated $500 per unit to a sidewalk account for every unit here because we could not accommodate that on Green Street.
So that paved sidewalk was never built off of the approved site plan?
That's right.
And that was taken care of with the as-built at the time with the city?
Yes, it was actually done prior to the final approval. We went through one meeting, SRTC, one meeting, then we changed it by the time we had our final approval.
Okay, so that's not, was ever built, wouldn't have made sense to been built?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just kind of run down through my thoughts and comments here as well. I agree with the elimination of the bike racks. I agree that for the most majority of folks there are going to store their bikes in their garages, stuff like that. I'm good with that. Moving down to the Cape Cod berms. I did take a ride through there this evening, noticed that the berms weren't installed, and it looks like final coat paving was performed. So if they were going to put in the Cape Cod berms, they should have done it during the binder course. So to put them in after the fact, it just would be a hassle. To say that they would be maintenance-heavy, I kind of disagree because what's currently going on is the landscaped islands during rain events are bleeding out onto the pavement, causing runoff, stuff like that. So it's only going to create more of a problem in the winter. So I would have liked to have seen them going in previous to final coat. I don't think it would make sense now, so I'm really on the fence on that one. And I think the applicant didn't really talk to the curb stops, so I'd like to hear more about that. And if there would be any plan on how each condo residence would isolate their property in the absence of a curb stop. So I think the rest of it I'm okay with, but just kind of need a little more information and look forward to thoughts from other Board members.
So in regards to the curb stops, I apologize for skipping that. So the curb stops, these are molded eight-foot pieces or six-foot pieces that go down and they get stainless steel bolted into the existing hot top on the guest parking only. Has nothing to do with the units themselves. This is for the parking area. And the reason why that was not done with granite or berm at the time is because the sheet flow is supposed to come off of these condominiums, go into the beehive level spreader to get regenerated before it goes back through the two buildings on the right side into a very large rain garden. So it was not called for to have any type of restriction for the water flow because that's how it's designed and approved.
Any other questions from the Board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Witham?
Yeah, I'd move that the application of River Valley Development Corp. for the modifications be accepted.
Motion made by Mr. Witham. Seconded by Mr. Rabides. Discussion? Mr. Rhodes?
Just a quick piece of clarification. On number six, there's an indication there's a request for a reduction of bond as well. Is that something that we should be looking at tonight, or was that dropped by the applicant? Okay. So is there a reduction of bond that we need to be voting on as well?
Yes. Part of the waiver package.
It's not part of the motion. If you look at the motion, there are six items there. Waiver from the bike rack, Cape Cod berm, the pathway to Turgeon Lane, the no parking signs, the signs for the gravel driveway, and the curb stops for the guest parking area. That was my motion. I think that the bond is a separate motion, in my opinion. It's sort of different than what we're dealing with here.
And that number might be off because number six indicates the bond, but down on, I believe, for the motion, it specifies curb stops.
Yeah, I just, I don't see anything on here indicating a reduction of bond. If that's something we should be looking at tonight, it's not indicated on what we've got here.
Yeah, it's number six on the bulleted items, but not part of the motion.
Right.
Okay, so that's clarified that this has nothing to do with the bond.
Correct. My motion is for the waiver from the bike rack, waiver from the Cape Cod berm, waiver from the paving of the pathway to Turgeon Lane, agreeing to the request for only two no parking signs, agreeing to the request for the sign modification language for the gravel road, and agreeing to the removal of the curb stops for the guest parking area.
My second is to support that as well.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Folks in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes.
If we could discuss the bond issue, since it's listed here, I mean.
I think it was an email correspondence regarding a reduction in the bond, and we were waiting to see if these waivers were going to get removed or approved by the Planning Board before we reduce the bond.
Okay.
So I would ask, I'm not familiar with this part of the process. Is this able to be done administratively now at this point?
Yes. Yes, this would be administrative, but we still need as-belts.
I understand, but I'm looking for a partial bond reduction. I need to pay the hot top.
It can be done administratively.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So our work is complete as far as this item goes, right? Thank you. Next item on the new business, item 4B. Kelly Barstow, on behalf of Favorite Development Group LLC, is seeking conceptual review for a new building and parking lot on property located at 28 Interstate Drive in the industrialized district. Assesses map 58, lot 6K, site number 12, 2023. Director Mears?
Yes, so the applicant is proposing to construct a 27,500 square foot steel building for industrial, light industrial food processing use on a vacant parcel located at Interstate Drive. The property is located in the industrial district and in the wetland buffer district. The parcel is 3.9 acres. The applicant has provided a conceptual plan for discussion of how the proposed layout would impact the wetlands buffers. This did go before the Conservation Commission last week. Conservation Commission did have some feedback as to regards to of where the building should be located. So now the applicant is asking for the Planning Board to have some input. There's no action required by the Board.
Great, thank you. This time, I'd like to invite Favorite Development to make your presentation.
Hello? Steve, hi, with Civil Works and Kelly Barstow from Favorite Foods. And again, we're here just tonight for feedback. We did go see the Conservation Commission last week with the exact same stuff you're looking at now. We haven't made any changes from conservation recommendations or conversation, but we just want to go through the whole thing with you guys. So Favorite Foods at the Interstate Drive, they've been here for 20, how many years?
25.
25 years. They've actually owned this parcel, which is across the street from them for the same period of time. They're bursting at the seams over here. I think you guys have seen, they were trying to do a development, some upgrades down the end of the street here, but that wasn't going to work for them. And then in terms of the size of the building, they could get on their existing parcel over here. And when I say over here, I'm talking about next to their existing building down west of, I'm sorry, north of their existing building. So what we did, we took a look at this parcel over here to see what the development capacity was for this, and they need somewhere between, anywhere from a 25 to like a 50,000 square foot building would be preferable for what they need to do. And Kelly will go into this in a little bit more detail, but I'll go through some of the high points. They distribute a lot of food products out of their existing facility. They also have a meat packing plant or meat processing facility down in Massachusetts that they need to get out of, and they want to consolidate that up here in Somersworth next to their existing facility. And to do that, they need to get out of there within a year and a half, maybe a little bit longer than that. So one of the things here is how to develop this piece of property to get themselves a bigger building as we can get, and you can't see it, I apologize. As big a building they can get on this piece of property. So we did go out and have the wetland scientists map the wetlands. This is a brand-new topography of this as well, so everything's updated to current standards. And what we found was that there's wetlands from off-site and with the wetland buffers here, and then a man-made wetland or for whatever it was, a borrow pit of some kind, turned into a wetland on the other parcel, and then when you add your 50 and your 100-foot buffer setbacks, you pretty much take a lot of the development capacity of the parcel away. There is also an access easement across the property here that accesses the parcel out back. And what you're looking at right now is the development that shortly, the sketch plans you guys are looking at right there is 20,000 square foot primary building with another 7,500 square foot building off of that, and that would be primarily for this would be not only meat processing, but also cold storage. Freezer storage. Now, the primary need for this building is actually tractor-trailer truck access, also for the employee parking. They don't have enough parking, or they have enough parking, but they're really struggling with the number of employees in parking next to their existing building. So one of the ideas here is to make sure that we have enough parking for this site as well as potential expansion for parking along the frontage. But what you're looking at here is this bulb down the area here is where the tractor-trailer would have to come in, turn around, and then back in, and we've got them three loading docks to do that. Why does this work well? And we've been through probably nine or 10 different iterations of building configurations, size of buildings. How can we put this building in here? We even looked at, you know, can we fill a wetland? Now, our experience as of late has been that dealing with the state of New Hampshire, not only for wetland fills, has been frowned upon. They have not been really receptive to doing any filling to create land area for development, even for a commercial development of this size. Again, this is about half of what they really want, but a minimum of what they would like to get for what they're looking at. And primarily, the issue that we had talked with the Concom and what we talked to you guys about here is these are your wetland buffers. The purple line that you see on the map is, you guys got maps, okay. The purple line is the 100-foot setback. The red line is the 50-foot setback. And the hatched area around the outside of the building was, my best guess, at a grading plan that would allow us to get stormwater and also grading for the building, and a pretty extensive retaining wall to do that, so we would have minimal impact on the wetlands themselves, but we would have a significant impact on the wetland buffers. As a matter of fact, if you look at the chart down the lower bottom, you've got probably 26,000 to 30,000 square feet of proposed impacts to the wetland buffers. We do know from the wetland scientist's report that this wetland that you see up here in this, up in the, call it the southeast corner, is of less significance. But it's from the state's perspective, and you're probably sure as well, Jeremy, that basically a wetland is a wetland is a wetland, so we have to go through the exact same process, whether it's a prime wetland where the area down and through here would be much more substantially wanted to be protected, I would say, than an area like this, which is in the middle of the lot that seems to have just been dug out sometime in the future, in the past. We do know that this whole flat plain, this area, if you guys didn't know this, but that used to be an airport. And so that's all been, it was all flat. It's flat as a pancake. It was cut off many times over the years and just kind of grown up, and really the water, as it comes down through that area, just doesn't flow really quickly. It does what it does. It's called a wetland, so we have the wetland buffers. So in our conversation with the Conservation last week, I was not present. Kevin from my office was there, but he and I talked about this extensively with Kelly as well, is we did look at a bunch of different configurations, and yes, if we push the building back here, we could fill this wetland, but the area that, if you look at the topography plan that you have with you, if you have it, I'm not sure you do, but the site actually drops from east to west significantly, 6, 8, 9 feet, 10 feet, which actually lends us really well in putting in a loading dock on the lower side, so we wouldn't have to fill. So we can take into account that slope, use that for what we need to do. So we can take into account that slope, use that for what we need to do for the building, and even leave the building up here, and that makes this retaining wall even lower than we would necessarily need if we actually pushed it further back and tried to flip this on the other way. So I've, I've looked at it quite extensively, trying to figure out the best approach here. And really, it's, it's kinda talking to the Concom and you guys to say, from a development standpoint, yes, I know we're, we're looking to, to impact wetland buffers, but from, from the perspective of what we're trying to accomplish here, we can still maintain, we still have drainage to take care of, which we always have to do, we have to maintain and mitigate stormwater. You know, and there's different ways to do that, whether we, low, low-impact design, we have, we have porous pavement areas for, for parking, wouldn't necessarily do porous pavement for the truck traffic because it would be destroyed pretty easily, but we can, we have some capacity in here for some rain gardens and whatever else we need to do for stormwater. The good thing is that this land area back over here wouldn't potentially be constructed and it's part of Velcro's property. We had also had a conversation about, well, do a lot line adjustment and gain some more land. Well, the only land we would gain is wetland areas, so it doesn't help us any. So we've looked at a lot of different, different things, and really, what we're here tonight is just initial feedback before we dive into this, and Kelly can give you a better idea. I'd, I'd like him to speak to and tell you why this is, is really needed for what they're looking to do.
My name's Kelly Barstow, I'm a vice president with Favorite Foods Incorporated. My family started the business 40 years ago. We started in Portsmouth, moved to Newington. Lipson's was the previous tenant in the 29 Interstate Drive building that we're currently in. Eight years ago, we purchased the meat processing company. For clarification, that is not a slaughterhouse, it's a primal, we, we portion out steaks and beef, pork, chicken, some lamb, stuff like that, but it's not a slaughterhouse, there's no livestock. So when we purchased the, the meat processing company that's down in Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, at the time, the previous owner stayed on with us for eight years. Six months ago, he retired. He owns the current building we're in, we leased that from him. It's a very old, I don't wanna use the word dilapidated, but it's very tired, it would cost us millions to bring it up to code with new ownership, USDA would get involved. So when we moved to 29 Interstate Drive, we purchased the parcel of land across from that with a vision of developing on that at some point down the road. Currently, we're at that stage in our evolution. 29 Interstate Drive currently is already busting at the seams, we need space. We own 20 Rescue Lane. Just briefly, the way that they designed that building on that property is at an angle across everything. So we had looked at putting 2015, 20,000 square foot building on that property without having to tear down Rescue Lane. Unfortunately, we cannot do that. It would impact the corner of the building, the way that it comes across that lot. We lease about 60, 65% of 20 Rescue Lane to a tenant. He has a five-year lease currently, so we're kinda stuck there, we can't really tear that down to do anything. If we can't develop this piece of property, at some point, we'd have to consider something else. We've looked at lease spaces, but then you're not consolidating the process on the one property, you're kinda doing the same thing we're doing now. It requires loading the truck in the morning, bringing it to Pittsburgh, reloading that truck down in Pittsburgh, bringing it back up to Summersworth, so a lease space somewhere else in the city really doesn't work, it doesn't accomplish what we need, so like Steve said, we're just looking for input on what you think can be done on that property, and we'll go from there.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
So I said, I'll ask for questions from the board? Okay. Questions from the board? Mr. Rhodes?
Not so much questions, it's just some more detail on what we discussed at Conservation with this property. Calling this lot difficult to build on is an understatement, it's pretty much all buffer, if it's not wetland proper. It's, it's a difficult lot to work with. The primary focus of what we discussed there was something pretty unusual for the Conservation Commission, which we kind of landed a recommendation to try to fill in a wetland instead of impacting a buffer. And that's that small circular sort of one off the southish portion of the lot there. You refer to it as a borrow pit, it, it's man-made, it's very low quality, it doesn't have a lot of function. The other wetland, which is on the site, it's one that goes way beyond this site, is actually functional, effective, doing what you want a wetland to do. In terms of storm control, and we're fortunate enough to have professional wetland scientist on Conservation, Jeremy Degler, who was able to dig into this in some detail with us, and his opinion, as a professional and a board member, is that the impact in terms of the overall wetland system in the area would be significantly less if that smaller wetland were filled than if the buffer was impacted, which kinda led us to a, could you take the frozen storage section, which is that small section, if I remember right? Is that right, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. And kinda pivot that up and stick it over that wetland, and that would probably be the lowest impact that you could do on this site without major changes in your design. So if we had, if we were able to make a recommendation, that would be what we'd recommend. The applicant's really in a tough spot with this site. There's not a lot you can do without having major impact. If we tried to be sticklers about you cannot build in a buffer with this, they wouldn't be able to do anything of help for their business. But they've been very receptive to suggestions around how to minimize impact, trusting that the end result would be as minimal as you could make it. And I know it's a hassle with the state, but if you can fill that little wetland, it's much preferable to get an offer on the larger one.
Yeah, we, I would love to, and it's, it's very unusual, as you well know, that Conservation making a recommendation like that. We're always, thank you. So we have actually, we actually have reached out to DES to have a pre-app meeting with those guys as well. My recent experience with them has been, I could go into 20 stories of it, but it was a roadside ditch in Newington off of Shattuck Way that collects a significant amount of the garbage and trash that's on Shattuck Way, and, and it was going to be used, we were gonna increase that, I'm sorry, clean it up and use that for stormwater for the roadway as well as what the city was doing, and, and we couldn't do it. It was the most bizarre, illogical conversation we had with, with DES. Other times, we have, it seems like black and white, but it would, just was not something we had a lot of good, good feedback for. I, I would prefer, I will go talk to them, have that conversation, but to, to, if we go with that, that proposal, do a whole design, which we would have to do, go through that whole process, and then get shot down, we're coming back and starting fresh with something similar to this, because anything less than, you know, 25,000 square feet or 30,000 square feet makes this parcel not usable for what they need to do it for. So what I'm trying to do is, is minimize both, the law issue here for a state permit is much more difficult than asking the planning board to give us waivers to a wetland buffer. It's not that it's less important, it's just that this, you guys have jurisdiction over this, and the state has that, and that creates a, a much more environment of, permitting environment is very, very difficult. So we, we just wanna have some idea of what direction you guys would prefer, and I understand what Mr. Rhodes was saying, and we agree, but also knowing the needs and how long they've had the property and what they need to do as well for what, what they do in Summersworth. And I was just telling, I was driving somewhere in the middle of nowhere, and there's a Favorite Foods trucks in front of me, I'm going, how does this get out here? And when I say I, I was in the middle of nowhere, I'm upper state, New Hampshire, and I'm saying Favorite Foods trucks. Yeah, so that's where I was. And here I am seeing a Favorite Foods truck coming from Summersworth, I'm going, oh my God. So, you know, I know from my conversations how much he actually needs this, but it was, it was really, it slapped me in the head just, just yesterday, thinking to myself, look at that, why? And so it was really kinda nice, but that's, that's why we're here. Just, just, we know that these are important, and we're very much aware of that, and we do try to take that into account in, in all our designs, but we really just want some feedback from you guys before we really jump into this, to know, are we just barking up the wrong tree? And do we just, you know, do we abandon this and have to go try to fund someplace else to do this? But it would be preferable here, if we could.
Mr. Berry, then Mr. Witham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I work on Interstate Drive, I work at Contech, I watch your trucks come in all day. You guys do a great business.
Thank you.
You know, and thank you for choosing Summersworth to settle up and operate, right? So first things first, I have a lot of respect for Commission. When Jeremy speaks on, on the Commission's behalf, I listen a lot. The fact that he's open-minded makes me open-minded. That's exciting, okay? So given that, you know, for, a couple of questions that come to mind is, so the small wetland, is that standing water, or is that dry?
It, it's, it has some standing water in it sometimes, it's like anything else, it rains, it's a hole, it sits there and it goes away.
Yeah, 'cause that, that would be my first question, is, is there anything living? Is it a habitat?
It's not, it's not a vernal pool.
Okay, so that, that's good. All right, so just a couple of knee-jerk reactions from me is, the retaining wall is mandatory, right? So we have to make sure that that retaining wall is built perfectly, and it also should have the least amount of impact. If, if we're gonna be in the buffer, if the Conservation Commission and the board feels that that is appropriate, that would have to be guaranteed. Second thing is in regards to treatment. Looking at your topography map, everything is going, I guess, west? Yeah, going down, going down on the drawing. So everything is going towards the big wetland, the one we actually care about, right? So what's important to me is that especially on the pavement, there has to be very good capture of water, treatment. So there has to be some form of pretreatment, whether it's through infiltration, or there's some sort of pond that has to be developed somewhere. I'm not sure how exactly you worked that out, but...
Yeah, let me just jump to a couple of those real quick as you said it. So the, the impacts that I'm looking, you're looking, seeing right here, they're essentially building impacts and a little bit of grading. I know I'm gonna have to do some type of detention pond here, I have to. Capturing, exactly right. So we, we would do porous pavement sections for parking lots, but not for the tractor-trailer truck area, but we, I left myself enough rooming through here on the backside of the retaining wall potentially to do something. I can either capture that, I can do some type of rain garden on that edge, capture it, and we would do the same thing with the roof runoff. Can I make it work? I don't even know yet. I mean, it really is getting past this with your input to say, you know, give it a shot, and I'm gonna do the best I can to make it all work. You know, this, these impacts may be a little bit greater, maybe a little less if, once I get into that design portion, but, but I hear what you're saying, 'cause we're thinking of the same things.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause if that project was handed to me when I was still a design engineer, I would've been like, eh, I don't know. It's, it's a, it's a difficult site, but it looks manageable. I mean, no matter what you do, all the water is going down, right? So certainly, we're looking for detection, we don't wanna have your, your final state, 'cause I'm sure it's all wooded, wooded, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so obviously, we wanna slow down the water, but we don't want to reduce the amount of water, so we don't wanna impact that wetland. The other thing that also comes to mind is also the building materials. I'm looking at the roof, you know, I know this is probably crazy talk, but we wanna make sure that anything that comes off that roof, any, any building materials are clean, you know, I don't know if, if it's gonna be a tar roof, or if that has any impact on water quality, but...
Well, yeah, it's, so it depends on, it doesn't really matter, 'cause most, 90% of the roofs themselves, the way the state looks at those, they, they do not need pretreatment, they just need to be treated. So they don't have the same issue relative to roads, where you have grease, gravels, and everything else coming off. So whatever it is, if it's rubber, if it's metal, whatever it is, that roof runoff is still being treated in terms of stormwater peak flows.
Yeah, so likely towards that, that created pond or vegetated buffer of some sort, yeah.
Yeah, what I envision is that we're capturing this in a, in some type of porous pavement section, all this stuff's gonna end up going into some type of pond along that edge, whether, whether that's a, a rain garden of some kind, or infiltration basin, it, who knows? But yeah.
All right, I guess the only other thing is just the turnaround for the trucks, just try and keep that as small as possible. I know there's only so much you can do in your, in your CAD models, but please try and minimize that as much as can, as you can, so...
Yeah, so, so we have, and we, we're actually, one of the things we don't do and can't do is, is back out onto Interstate, because they actually utilize this area to come down next to their other building. So that, that radius is most typically, minimum radius for tractor-trailer truck is, is about 100-foot radius, or diameter, I should say, to get around this and still be able to get in next to a park, and so I have looked at that, and that's as small as I'm gonna get it, to be able to get him to be able to get three trucks in there at any one time.
So it is detection to have full-size tractor-trailers?
Absolutely.
52 footers?
53 footers.
53 footers, thank you. Okay.
Well, that's, that 53 footer is, is the trailer, correct?
Plus a truck, right, it's articulated.
It's 70 feet from nose to tail.
Okay, understood. Okay, I mean, I'm not scared away, as long as the Conservation Commission is still open-minded to it, I'll, I'll be open to seeing what you guys come up with. Thank you.
Mr. Witham, then Mr. Abidas.
Thank you. Good word to use, I'm not scared away, right? Follow my parallel here. If, if someone's looking to build a house on a lot that doesn't meet frontage requirements on a street, it doesn't meet setback, I mean, it's, it's basically an unbuildable lot, they go before the zoning board and plead their case, looking for variances. That is not too dissimilar from what we're doing here, although it's not a variance, you're asking for us to give you permission to be within these setbacks. Why? Because this is a lot that has any number of struggles with it. We have a business here in town which is very successful, they wanna grow that business largely on the same space. It makes sense to me, I'm willing to play in the sandbox here as much as we can. I don't know if you've given any thought to this, but Interstate Drive terminates at this property, right? And it just kinda ends, right? There's no hammerhead, there's no cul-de-sac, it just sort of ends there. So there's really no, and you've already described, there's no buildable land beyond this, right? Is there any value in discussions with the city about deeding over a portion of Interstate Drive provides you more land? I don't know if that helps here or not, but as a city councillor, I'd be open to that sort of out-there conversation.
So the, the only thing it would do for us is move this cul-de-sac off the property onto this property, which actually could help across the street as well. But it does, exactly.
I just throw it out there as an idea.
Yeah, good idea.
Don't slam the door on that thought, right?
No, but we, we, one of the things we did look at was the same thing, because the wetland, of course, comes across the backside, we still have the same wetland buffer issues we need to describe. Here, at least, I have an opportunity that I can actually try to accommodate on-site. But if, if this doesn't work, and I go through the whole process and, and that makes sense, we'll definitely come talk to you. That's a good idea, thank you.
Those are my only thoughts, thanks.
Mr. Abidas, then Mr. Horton.
Have you thought about, the only question that I have is, would it work to shrink the footprint and build up some? So we get this, you know, if you look out on Gator Rock, that building that's new there is what, three, four stories? It's a big building, so...
No, and I'll explain why. If this was all freezer space, we could go up 50 feet in the air, use pieces of equipment, the processing room ceiling, which will be almost all of this, you want it as low as possible, because every single day, twice a day, the entire room has to be sprayed down and cleaned. So when you go up 20 feet in the air, you lose the ability to clean ceilings, it's all chemlight ceilings. This section of the building can go four stories up, this one's only 14 feet, 16 feet, something like that.
The, what I, so a purpose-built building is what this is gonna be. So right now, to renovate an existing facility to get it to what it needs to do is, is far more expensive than doing a purpose-built building, and this is not gonna be a cheap building, cheap build. But, and the question you asked is the same question I had asked him originally as well, why don't we just go up? And the answer is, because of the processing, what they need to do, if it was all freezer space, different story, you could have, you'd have a, you'd have a Bluebird storage facility here, 10 stories high. But that's, that's the reason why.
That's all I have.
Mr. Horton?
Thank you. So my comments are pretty much in line with what's already been said. I rely a lot on what the conversation, the Conservation Committee provides for recommendations. Additionally, I'm not scared, you know, to take a look at this and, and see what we can figure out to make this a buildable lot. I did stop by, swing by quickly on the way prior to this meeting. It is a rough site, that's for sure. My only thoughts would be shifting the building as far up towards the road as you can, minimizing the parking lot to do something like that, but I understand there's a lot more requirements and, and thought to it, so... and thought to it, so...
Yeah.
Potentially flipping the building to match the shape of the site, you know?
Tractor-trailer, so everything you just described, I've done.
Okay.
And one of the limitations just for that as well, if you look at the color map, you see this little finger? That finger, the closer I get, I don't have use there, so...
I see, yeah.
I, yes, I've looked at that. If you flip it, then the loading dock is on the high side. Now I have an eight-foot elevation drop to the building. It doesn't do me any good.
Right, you're going to need a lot of fill.
Yeah, exactly.
So I'm okay, you know, provided Conservation Commission provides their comments to the Board.
Got it.
Any other comments from the Board?
We'll give it a shot. We'll get a hold of DES and have a conversation with them and see if they would be, I know what the answer is, but we'll give it a shot anyways, let you know. And then it's up to these guys if they want to pull the trigger and go for it, so. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Can we do, Ron? Ron, can we do D first? D should be quick, right? Jump to D, then go back to C.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we address Agenda Item D. There's no objection.
If it needs a second, I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Rabides. Any discussion? All those in favor of changing the Agenda Item, raise your right hand. Opposed? Item 4D, Craig Rioto is seeking an extension request and approve plan to construct a sports hub dome complex at a property located at 165 Route 108 in the Commercial-Industrial CI District, Assessors Map 63, Lot 10, Site Number 042021. Director Mayes.
Yes, so the applicant is back before us, seeking an extension. We are waiting for the final plans, cost of construction estimate and all, or the driveway permit, right? That's the last item. And applicant is requesting an additional 120 days to meet those conditions. We have a meeting with the project team next week to discuss the next steps to get them to the pre-construction meeting, but they need a few, a little bit more time to get their final plans in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Jeff Leva, Civil Consultants. Craig Rioto from the Sports Dome. Again, we're just seeking an extension here because we're, we were pulling everything together with vacations in summertime and construction schedules, pulling all of our construction estimates and all of our team together for site subcontractor that we have to get into a pre-con meeting. We couldn't make it before our time ran out. What we're hoping to do is, I have a meeting with Michelle next Tuesday at 10 o'clock to go over just the items on the final checklist, make sure we're all square with that so that we can get a pre-con meeting scheduled so that we can start site work this fall. That's our intent. As far as DOT goes, I received an email from District 6 about a month ago saying that I should have something shortly. Haven't seen it yet, but that's a good step, at least from there. So it doesn't seem like there's going to be a holdup on our side for us to start that work. But our goal is realistically in the next week and a half is to have the pre-con meeting to get that going. We've finished up our meeting with Bob Cummings, our fire safety engineer, getting him to review all the final plans, and we're ready to come into the town and get started.
All right, thank you. Questions from the Board? Mr. Witham.
Thank you for the update. There is no project that we've had in the city that has generated more conversation on the street around what's up with the Sports Dome? And I keep blaming the Hampshire DOT. I don't know if that's fair, but that's who I've been blaming. It seems as though it's at least a reasonable reason for all of this. I guess my question, Jeff or Craig, because people have asked, because I've said about the driveway permit with DOT, they counter with, well, what about the new Jeep dealership and these tractor dealerships? They had to get driveway permits too. How did they get them and you can't?
That's a good question, and I don't know that answer. And I've kind of asked that answer around the way to District 6, and I haven't received a good response. Maybe it has to deal with the fact of our driveway at Willand Drive comes out on 108 and there's, it's a larger intersection to deal with. It doesn't make sense, you're right, because we've, you've seen the dates, because we've provided all the information to the city, the dates where we've submitted our application to DOT and just had radio silence from, for a long, long time. It's frustrating, that's for sure, on that part, but we want to move ahead and not worry...
I don't know if I can share in your frustration, but I do.
Yeah, no, we get it, yeah.
Other questions from the Board? Continue motion. Question, Mr. Goodwin?
Do you think 120 days is sufficient? Are you really just at the tail end here of pulling things together?
Yeah, we are. Yeah, we've got our final mechanical plans came through. We've adjusted all of our interior room fit-out layout, so we have our plan sets ready to go.
And you're confident that DOT will get you what you need within that?
Yes.
Any other questions from the Board?
Move to approve the 120-day extension.
Motion made by Mr. Belmont, seconded by Mr. Rabides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Item 4C, Bowler Engineering on behalf of PJ Land Development LLC is seeking conceptual review for a new car wash, motor vehicle services, on a property located at 459 High Street in the Residential-Commercial RC District. Assessors Map 40, Lot 60, Site Number 132023. Director Mayes.
Yes, the applicant is proposing to subdivide an existing 3.5-acre parcel into two lots. Lot 1 will retain the existing residential structure, and Lot 2 will be developed into around a 4,000-square-foot motor vehicle service car wash. The proposed, this property is located in the Residential-Commercial District where the proposed use will require a special exception from the zoning board. The applicant has provided conceptual plans for discussion, and no action is required by the Board.
Great, thank you. My name's Greg DeBono with Bowler Engineering, Branch Manager of our Bedford office located at 3 Executive Park Drive. I'm joined here tonight with Connor Bailey, who's one of our senior designers who worked on this plan and will go in more detail. Before he does, I just wanted to give you kind of a brief overview of Title Wave, who we're here obviously representing on behalf of. And, you know, this section of High Street, we are really between the ramp of 16 and then to Walmart, we're one of the last pieces of property that is currently basically a single-family residential. Everything else is generally similar services to this in the sense that it's retail or commercial, there's gas stations, there's automotive service like Firestone and other things. And for us, you know, representing car washes and automated car washes, it's a real ideal location for us. We do acknowledge that we would be required to have a special exemption because it is associated with the automotive use, so that would come through zoning. But really, we're here tonight because besides preparing some due diligence and evaluating the two plans that we've submitted, we want to get some feedback and make sure that we're on the right path here before coming in with a formal site plan application. And as far as Title Wave goes, there are four locations in Massachusetts. They do have ambitions to continue to grow and expand up into the Northeast. This would be one of the first locations in New Hampshire. It is a fully automated car wash, so basically, you know, you go through a pay station, you can actually pay online ahead of time, there's monthly membership opportunities for you, there's even something that they offer as an unlimited car wash feature, which is really great. They offer family packages and individual packages, so you can wash your cars many times as you want, which we all know from living here, you know, the amount of salt and everything on your cars, you might want to use that a handful of times. They're open seven days a week. They pride themselves in being just an extremely modern, clean, well-lit, bright, and basically welcoming car wash facility. The other feature that is nice about what they offer is all the vacuum stations. I go to other car washes where it's basically, it's automated, but there's no place to actually vacuum out your car. So this offers the ability to stay in your vehicle, go through the car wash system, but then when you come out, there's numerous locations where either vacuums are mounted on booms or underneath a canopy structure. So again, kind of a nice additional feature that we don't really find in too many car wash facilities. And again, I think for us, we did, we are noting that the intent of having a subdivision, the plan that you have up on screen here roughly leaves about two acres that we're taking out of the 3.5-acre lot to create the car wash. This is actually quite, quite nice for us to have. If I look at the other Title Wave facilities in Massachusetts, they're all much smaller sites, tighter radiuses for turning and maneuverability, less area for vacuums. So this really is kind of more of their new prototype of what the Title Wave, you know, Auto Spa is looking to bring to the market. And I think, and I'll just, let's see if I can scroll down. Is it working? What I wanted to do was actually just move down to the next page, it was a little more zoomed in. See if I can do that.
That's also the page you have in front of you on the Board here as well.
Look at that. Thank you very much for controlling what I clearly could not do. And so I'm going to hand it over to Connor here. He's going to be able to get a little bit more into the specifics of the site design, but we'll both be here to answer questions. And again, we're really just appreciative of this opportunity to hear any initial thoughts or suggestions. We really think we're bringing a good business and a good operation to the site and a good use for High Street.
Perfect. Yep, Connor Bailey with Bowler Engineering. I'm out of our Southborough, Massachusetts office, who's handling the design for this site. As you can see on the plan on the screen, the proposed car wash is just under 4,000 square feet. It has a dual-lane pay station kiosk, and as Greg mentioned, you know, a handful of vacuum spaces as well. There's 31 total spaces being proposed, 24 vacuum spaces, and then five spaces for employees as well as two accessible spaces. We're proposing a full-access curb cut off of High Street. And then once you're within the site, it's generally one-way circulation. You flow through the pay stations, through the car wash, and then the vacuums are free once you've used the car wash. You'll also see a, we call it a cannot-wash lane, in the event that someone makes it through the pay station and then decides they don't want to wash at that point. An employee can kind of direct them out in more of an emergency situation, and they can exit the site that way. And the facility, so the car wash itself, as Greg mentioned, is automated. You pull your car up onto a track and it hooks you and just pulls you through to the end. That being said, there are employees on-site as well, so there's generally one employee at the pay station as well as one to two employees at the front of the tunnel for, you know, spraying down vehicles, lining up cars with the tracks and everything like that. So, yeah, we'd love to hear any feedback or any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you. Questions from the Board? Ms. Perry, then Mr. Witham.
Okay, hi, guys. Yeah, one thing's giving me a little bit of heartburn looking at this plan is, I am not liking the two-way entrance on the bottom. And I know you guys have the one-way flow in the main section of the property, but your inlet is going right into cars. I don't know if you guys see that. I know, granted, that's a full queue, but your car is going right into the back end of, you know, number eight on your drawing. Maybe as a proposed alternative, would you guys consider on the, I'm assuming, is north actually north there in the...
Yes.
Okay, cool. So in the northeast corner, maybe you have a one-way, you have a one-way coming in in the southerly direction? Or maybe even just have everything just come into that top-right corner, and then just have everything outbound come out the bottom, if that makes any sense. I don't know if I'm just spitting gibberish here, but for safety reasons, I would say keep it as one-way to the south side of the site. Yeah, because I would have a really hard time accepting the project as it's proposed right here. You know, as far as the design of the vacuums and the location of the building, I don't have a problem with it. I'm okay with the location of the trash enclosure. It's just the entrance and exit of the site that I would work on more.
Understood, yeah. And just as a side note on that as well, we have retained a traffic consultant who will be able to prepare a traffic study for the area and be able to speak to that a little bit more. And once we have the information from them, we can, we'll certainly consider it and see what we can do with it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Witham.
Thank you. I would be interested in the traffic consultant's thought on the approach here. Generally speaking, this Board doesn't favor two curb cuts. We like one curb cut. But that being said, I did note that the current curb cut is almost directly across the street from the curb cut that goes into the Goodwill and AAA and all of that. And it just seems to me that we might want to have those more aligned. So the entrance into the Goodwill, just to use that as the example, has a center island, and I think mirroring that across the street, I think, has value for traffic flow that might want to try to go across, difficult as it may be. It would also, I think, be aesthetically a bit more pleasing, so that just works for me. I'm not dismissive of another entry or exit, but most traffic engineers would frown on that, but I'd be interested in the thought process. People on the street are going to ask me, do we really need another car wash, right? And my response to them is, it's a buildable lot, people can do what they want with their lot, provided it's within our regulations. But again, just for the applicant, I'm sure you're aware, there are currently two car washes on Route 108. There are currently, there's currently one on High Street, one soon to be added on High Street, so two, this would make three. And there are, there's one just over the line in Dover and another, yet another one proposed in Dover. So by, my goodness, there shouldn't be any dirty cars in the tri-city region, right? There's plenty of opportunity, so perhaps. So, but I think traffic is going to be the one that we need to manage most. Again, the curb cut alignment is something that speaks to it. We are cognizant on this Board about building design standards. I get that it's a car wash, but can it look nice and not look like it belongs on a Vegas strip? I think there's a balance there, so just be mindful of that curb appeal, if you will.
Yeah, and...
Mr. Horton.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, sorry about that. Just to speak to architecture for a moment, we, obviously at this stage, have haven't prepared full architectural plans. One thing I can say that Title Wave just does in general, the long side of the building that's, I guess, facing south on this plan, is generally a fully glass facade, so you can see right in and watch the vehicles being washed. So just to help a little bit with the, you know, to move away from the gray block sides, you can actually see what's going on inside.
So to piggyback on Council Witham's comments, I do like the idea of the balance between, you know, Goodwill, we'll be using Goodwill as an example, but, you know, Goodwill access and egress, so... Additionally, my thoughts there are, I think you guys have bought a pretty dense residential area there to the north. I would just like to see if that's the case, like to see, you know, heavy buffer, because you know, you're talking about... have bought a pretty dense, um, residential area there to the north. I would just, uh, like to see if that's the case, uh, like to see, you know, heavy buffer, 'cause you, you know, you're talking about vacuums and blowers and noise in general. So whatever we can do there to keep them in mind and keep their peace of mind would be important there as well.
Yeah. Uh, just to note, I should've said at the beginning, but directly to the north of us is actually the Dollar Tree, and then beyond the Dollar Tree is additional residential. So directly on the other side of the buffer, which looks light on our plan, but that's the parking lot and then the Dollar Tree.
Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. Um, couple of items stories here. Uh, Mr. Horton stole my item around noise control, uh, and buffering, although I had forgotten the Dollar Tree was there as well. So that does cut down the need for that a little bit. Lining up the entranceway with your across-the-street neighbor would definitely be a good thing. In this case, offsets, songs like that lead to problems. Um, Mr. Witham and I don't disagree on a lot, but, uh, appearance standards for commercial buildings is probably one of them. I am personally in favor of neon, obnoxious mascots, all of that sort of fun stuff. Um, so if you want to see a spirited debate on the board, uh, bring a couple of different plans and see which one of us gloms onto which one.
Yeah, I'm personal.
The only other thing I'd mention here is, uh, we've, um, given out a lot of landscape waivers for high-street properties in the past. Those have been largely driven by the compactness of the lots and the difficulty of getting landscaping in there. You don't have that constraint here. You've got a good-sized lot. You spoke to that as being the model going forward. Um, given the amount of open space you're likely to have with this plan, I would look to see a good landscape plan included with it. Um, and I'd refer you to a city site or a city list that's maintained by the planning department for, uh, species that I like to see too. Um, whether that's at odds with my affection for neon and obnoxious mascots, it is, but I think you can do two things on one lot. Um, so, uh, it's an interesting approach that you could take here. Um, but we look forward to seeing what you come up
Mr. Haberman.
Yeah, but looking at the, uh, the trash enclosure, a little concern on whether or not the, you got enough turnaround space for the truck to get in and out of there after he's loaded and offloaded.
Uh, yeah, so the intent right now, um, would be for the truck to pull in and, you know, collect the trash, and then, uh, they'd be loading off hours, um, for the, the car wash operations. So they'd be able to pull further into the site and sort of do like a three-point, um, turn. They'd pull into the queue, uh, where the cars are, and then back up towards the, uh, do not enter coming out of the, um, vacuum spaces.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Goodwin.
I guess I'll, um, echo what I presume to be public sentiment and say that I am a little disheartened to be reviewing another car wash that is more a reflection of our zoning than your business. Um, I do think this lot, uh, as noted, is, is large. It's also greenfield. I think the community probably has a soft spot for it, and they are not going to be happy to see another car wash put up here, um, in general, whether or not it's a good business. Um, so I do think landscaping is going to be critically important if you receive your approvals from the zoning board. Uh, I would try and make that street frontage as, as nice as possible. Um, I don't like the placement of the trash enclosure. You're making everyone on the way into this drive-by it. I would put it somewhere less visible. Um, I also agree that the alignment of the curb cut, uh, I think is pretty critical. We don't have a lot of coordination opportunities with our curb cuts along High Street. This is one that we do, uh, and I think, uh, you'd want to take advantage of that.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director Mayers, any new business that may come before the board?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Get into item 5A, solar ordinance discussion. Director Mayers.
Yeah, so in, you, in the packet, you should've seen, uh, an updated memo. Uh, this has gone before the planning board, uh, in June and July. Uh, so we did incorporate some changes from the discussions that we had over the last two months. Uh, we did add some additional language, uh, in our zoning for conditional use permit criteria, which is not in the zoning currently. Um, we changed the solar use definitions, um, to simplify it, uh, for administrative purposes, to small, medium, and large scale. Uh, we also changed, uh, the uses from special exception to be allowed to come through the conditional use permit, uh, for requirements for any solar installation other than rooftop. So small, medium, or large scale would require a conditional use permit, uh, based on the table, uh, to come before the planning board. We did incorporate additional buffer yard requirements and stormwater regulations and noted that all, um, uh, the utilities should be underground if possible. So, uh, for discussion would be, uh, page nine, uh, of the CUP table, uh, conditional use permit table is whether, um, small, uh, solar installation should be allowed in the residential district. I think I would want, uh, the board to weigh in on that. We did put a footnote regarding that, but I think that's a discussion that the board should have regarding ground-mounted solar in residential districts within the city of Sommersworth, if that's what you want to see. Or you could prohibit that use. Uh, roof-mounted solar is allowed in all zoning districts, rooftop.
So.
Mr. Witham. I think we're very close here, quite frankly. Um, I guess a question I have, Michelle, when we talk about ground mount, I think there's two things that I think about. I think of ground mount being an example, what recently went up behind the Dunkin' Donuts on Route 108. So they're flat panels, uh, you know, maybe two, three feet off the ground on a tilt, uh, behind a fence. And then there's ground mount, which are the solar tracking stations. Those are two different animals in, in my view. So I'm almost thinking that we need to have ground mount divided between, I don't know how to define them, but the one behind-
The shade.
Yeah, exactly. And to that end, a ground mount like we have behind Dunkin' Donuts, if that's in somebody's backyard, I'm less concerned about that than I am with one of the tracking units. So that's the, the one hiccup with this that I see. And I don't know how we massage that, but, but that's the, 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 the one piece. And to that end, it, it speaks in here about the maximum height of the, the ground mount. I think it's 15 feet. Uh, that would put our existing solar trackers all in non-conformance, 'cause they gotta be 25, 30, I'm guessing. So maybe the height restriction helps us there? I don't know, but, uh, your feedback, I guess.
Yeah, so I think we could add, uh, a section in the table of uses for ground-mounted solar, because we do have a definition 19.33.4 for ground-mounted about active, it does say active tracking racking systems. So I think we could just add a line, uh, underneath either roof-mounted or large-scale solar, and then, uh, discuss if, if we would want them permitted in, in which zone.
I think that's heading in the right direction, so that's, those are my thoughts initially anyways.
And Ms. Goodwin?
A similar thought. I'm, I'm wondering if, um, yeah, if, if either mechanization or height could be the, the defining future. I, I, I don't know what the minimum dimension or maximum dimension would be, but there, it feels like it would be okay up until a certain level, and at which, at some point, it's no longer okay in a residential context, right? And I think it's mostly height that's determining that, for me anyways.
Mr. Rhodes and then Mr. Bellmore.
Um, one of the potential angle for looking at the, the tracker versus, for lack of a better term, Dunkin' Donuts-style, uh, ground array. Um, trackers generally require installation of a permanent concrete pylon that they sit on, um, which is a dug-in-to-the-ground permanent structure. The rack mounts typically just get spiked in. Um, so that could be another angle to look at restrictions on your, your pouring concrete or creating a permanent structure versus something that you can take apart and remove with a pickup truck and a, a drill.
Mr. Bellmore.
Yeah, we had some samples. I missed last month's meeting, but, but prior to the meeting before, we had some samples. I think one community outlawed them, or prohibited them, rather, in residential. I, I just assumed the way the ground mount and not being able to be done in residential period makes it simple. Just makes it simple.
Makes it easy.
Yeah. That's what I would look for.
What are the comments? Mr. Horton?
I'd just say, I like that, uh, idea provided by Bob. Make, you know, makes sense, um, in residential area. I'll also just, uh, note that, uh, you know, maybe we should just, where it's a new ordinance or regulation, uh, that we revisit it, you know, say after a run, some runtime to make sure changes, any changes that may need to be incorporated that we do so. And, you know, and speaking to that, you know, are there additional regulations that should be revised, given the amount of waivers we, we approve over the course of a year, you know? So we talk a lot about landscape standards, bike racks, stuff like that, you know, those type of items there, you know, in the future, should we think about, talk about, and, uh, perhaps revise those types of things too. Thanks.
Mr. Goodwin.
I think I'd be okay with eliminating ground mount in residential areas. I guess my question that I'm reflecting on and be curious on other people's thoughts on, I think lot size matters, right? So it's like if you owned a large prop, like a large residential property, eh, you had a backfield or whatever, and you wanted to put a ground mount system there, that doesn't seem unreasonable. And I think it's the one sort of caveat where it's just like, okay, I could see like if you have 10, five acres or 10 acres, not that we have a ton of those around town, that that would, feels like a different case than most of our residential property.
So Witham and then Ms. Berry.
Yeah, I kind of like where Mr. Goodwin's going there. I, 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 I think it does clean it up a lot if you just say no ground mount in residential areas. I think that's the, the direction to go. You think about it, most people, if they're, they're doing it for their residence, right, they're gonna put it on their roof, right? That just seems to make sense. If they can't put it on their roof because they have too many trees, well, it's not gonna work well in their yard unless they have a large tract of land. And we may be thinking about something that doesn't even exist, you know, it'd be, I, I bet you outside of maybe a few agricultural district properties, we don't have many that would be large enough. So, uh, and I suppose if someone had such a large tract, the, the spirit of the ordinance is that, you know, the lot is too small. Uh, they could always seek relief from zoning.
Mr. Berry?
Yeah, I, I see where you're coming from, uh, councillor, but you know, at the same time, yes, some people might not have sun on the roofs, you know, but maybe they have sunlight over there on the other end of their property, you know? And to, to just say no, that, that doesn't make sense. Um, so ground mount personally, this is just my opinion, I would say, come before us. Let us take a look at it and see if it's appropriate. But to do it all out scratch, I don't think that's the right way to go.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yeah, I talked about wanting to try to encourage solar by any means necessary or possible in prior meetings discussing this, but I'm kind of coming around to that position, that trying to come up with something formal and established to allow ground mount in a residential is, it's more of a solution in desperate search of a problem than anything else. Um, so, exception basis, I'd agree. It seems like the way to go.
What are the discussion? Director Mayers?
Just a quick question. So that would be a conditional use permit to come before within the residential districts. Is that what the board?
For ground mounted.
For ground-mounted. We, we do require, uh, additional, you have to follow the criteria of the conditional use permit, and, uh, it needs to follow the setbacks, and it can't be in front of the primary building or structure. But there are requirements, and it would have to come before the planning board.
Should we cover anything that has to do with disposal of old units, solar units, or?
Uh, actually, we do have, um, an abandonment plan, uh, as part of the ordinance.
That just says they gotta get rid of it. Do we have anything as far as where they get rid of it, or?
No, uh, it's just-
How would they get rid of it?
Um, we, we would carry an escrow, uh, for removal-
Okay.
-for, for the property, so.
No, it was like the proper disposal of?
Yeah, I just think of like the satellites that were a problem years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Dish satellites. So we would, we would keep an escrow account, similar to what they do with, uh, cell phone towers-
Okay.
-to remove that if, if needed.
All right. Any further questions? Mr. Berry?
Uh, sorry, just a point of clarification. On the abandonment, I see in the last sentence it says, um, "An abandoned system will be removed and the site restored within six or 12 months of abandonment." Is it six or 12?
Uh, I think we can just-
Well, it, it's a big deal to me, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, i- is it gonna be a year or is it gonna be six months? I think we-
I think it should be six months, probably.
Yeah, it's a circle one or scratch, sure.
Wouldn't that depend on when they apply for that? 'Cause six months could be winter or, you know? If you apply for that in the fall, you got six months, so you got until April to get it done, depending on the season. So the, the 12 months may give you a little bit more time to, weather-wise, to accomplish that. Just a thought. Does it also depend on how big the solar array is?
Any further comments? Director Mayers, any questions, uh, to the board?
Uh, so we will be back in incorporating changes for the next planning board meeting.
Sounds good. Communications and miscellaneous. Any comments?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple.
Director Mayers.
Um, on September 14th, the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, along with the planning office, will be, uh, hosting the housing forum at the Black Box Theater from 5:30 to 8:30. Uh, we do have an event registration for those who want to attend, and I would encourage, uh, planning board members to attend that. I do have an update regarding, uh, Walmart. Uh, they are, they have signed a contract to work on their landscaping plan today, so we're moving forward with that. And I did include, uh, some correspondence from, um, uh, Sunningdale regarding the street, uh, petition to accept, uh, Sunningdale subdivision, uh, for street acceptance, villages at Sunningdale. So, uh, they are looking to move forward with that to city council, uh, next month.
It is an agenda item for our Public Works and Environment Committee meeting later this month, and then-
month, and then full council action probably in September.
Thank you.
We're putting it on the agenda on the fifth.
Take a motion to adjourn, said this month. Which may be by Mr. Abidas.
Second.
By Mr. Berry. All those favor is right hand. Pose. Thank you very much.